All right, everybody, I got seven o'clock. Let's call to order this regular city council meeting for June 11th, 2024. If you wouldn't all mind, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legits.
At Pledge of Legits, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, Kendah, roll call, please.
Council Ripma.
Here.
Council Caswell.
Here.
Council Wynn.
Here.
Council White.
Here.
Council Wittrin.
Here.
Council Glantz.
Present.
Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Mr. Ray Young.
Agenda update. There are no adjustments to the agenda tonight, and the only other note is that Mr. Trumpke was not able to get back in town tonight to join us. So Matthew Cole is on the Zoom call as our city attorney. He's been here before filling in for Ed, so we want to welcome Matthew to our meeting tonight.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here in Mr. Trumpke's absence. Um, let's move on to agenda item number two, public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Uh, let's start on Zoom. If anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and city of residence for the record, please. All right, not seeing anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council chambers tonight? All right, we'll take first row. And I'm pointing.
That's all right.
Uh, go ahead and approach the bench and state your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Timmer Shoup. I live in Portland.
We'll have the mic closer. Thanks, guys.
My name is Timmer Shoup. I live in Portland, and I work for the city of Troutdale. Uh, we're doing bargaining right now with the city. And one of the main concerns is that safety that we have, we have a safety policy within there that has a safety committee, and it's been a fight through the last three bargaining sessions just to keep it in place, um, so that we have some actual safety. So when I started here 17 years ago, I was told to go down in the manhole. The atmosphere detectors were on the side because we've already checked the atmosphere and documented that there's nothing wrong with it. And when I looked at the notes, all that was done like five years prior to when I went down. So I insisted on using the atmosphere detector. And as far as I know, we've moved forward with having somewhat of an internal wastewater policy, but across the board, I know that water didn't used to use the atmosphere detector either, um, when they went in places. And so there still is no citywide policy for confined space that I know of. And so the safety committee needs some sort of resource to be able to actually push some of these agendas forward. That's all I'm gonna say on that one. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Troutdale City Council. My name is Evan Pullman. I live in the city of Portland. Um, I am the bargaining representative for 44 workers at the city of Troutdale, who are members of Ask Me Local 3132. We have been bargaining since mid-December on a new union contract. Unfortunately, we have not yet reached an agreement with city management. We are here tonight to tell you directly what we are asking for at the bargaining table. Assembly members are expected, are expecting to receive what they have already earned and deserve by providing vital services to our community on a regular and reliable basis during the COVID pandemic, wildfires, ice storms, and all times in between. What are we asking for? A COLA that moves workers forward by accounting for inflation and prices that workers have experienced over the last two years. Over the last two years combined, the Consumer Price Index used by the union and the city has increased by 12 and a quarter percent. Yet the city has only increased wages by 5% last year. The rising cost of living without wage increases to mitigate harms our members who seek to provide a decent standard of living for their families. We're also seeking greater retirement security. We're looking to improve the retirement benefits of our members and officers to provide for retirement where they are able to have greater income security in their later years. Additionally, we're asking the city to incentivize employees to put their own money away for retirement by matching deferred contributions. We're asking for schedules that we can count on. We're asking that the city only alter employee schedules with less than 10 days' notice when there's a bona fide emergency. And finally, follow up on what President Timmer Shoup spoke to around safety. We're demanding the city prioritize safety in the workplace. This includes traditional physical and safety hazards, but also a plan for preventing violence in the workplace. The city should be willing to memorialize in our contract what is already a part of the law, which is a worker's right to refuse a hazardous work assignment, especially when they have called that issue to management's attention and the problem remains unfixed. We know that the contract we are asking for comes at a cost, but we believe that the city of Troutdale has planned well financially, and it has the funds and financial outlook to pay for this contract. Our members provide valuable services, keeping our water and wastewater systems running, maintaining safe streets, parks, and green spaces for our city residents to experience and enjoy, and keep other vital government services running that support the residents and businesses in Troutdale. In short, we keep Troutdale running. Without our work, the city doesn't work. It's time to invest into your employees, so we can maintain our world-class level of city services. We look forward and expect that you'll send your management bargaining team back to the table with the resources and authority to reach a contract settlement that we can all be proud of. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So for those that raised their hand when I called for people in council tonight, uh, let's go to the Is there anybody in the same row as, yeah, go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Oh, my name's Christopher Brown. I'm an employee of the city of Troutdale. I live in Borning, Oregon. Um, I just want to speak to a portion of what we're asking for, that the aspect regarding retirement security and that the matching and the deferred comp by the city to help ensure that, you know, younger people at the beginning of their working careers and even people later into their working careers, uh, try to make sure they invest into their retirement. Uh, humans are inherently flawed and don't have good, uh, long-term planning naturally. Uh, so incentivizing that, um, that, uh, incentivizing, um, retirement early on in their careers and all through their careers will help them later when with their retirement security, so they have the money, uh, to have a successful later, uh, portion of their lives. So, uh, I mean, that's something that's very important that we try to ensure we get in this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Anybody in the same row? Anybody in the front row? Yeah, let's go. Approach the desk. Name, city of residence.
Mr. Kendah. No, I work out at the sewer plant. Ray Young has been here for so long, done so many jobs, I have no plea.
Let's go ahead and sit down so we can speak into the mic.
Came here in 99. Council White and Council Ripma were both on the city council, I believe. Randy quit and went to Green Pastures. And he came back as mayor. The rest of you, God bless you. You've got more patience than I do. You heard what was just said. We need to keep our medical. And for those of you who have children, I lost mine, I don't recommend it. It sucks. But our children, as well as ourselves, need our medical. As Tim said, safety is a primary concern. Uh, like Tim, let's talk old school. I was out behind your house one time, dropped some equipment down a manhole, didn't have a wayback wind, did not have a gas detector, just held my breath and shot that. Things have changed. We've got to keep them positive. Sure, manholes stink. Randy has worked for Public Works, did a good job. He's probably more aware of what goes on, and I'm not picking on anybody here with Public Works than any of you. Some of us drive a good deal. We've got CDLs. The argument has been made that on your, when I signed up, you've got a CDL, you knew what you were doing. That is true. I'd like to have a few of you with me driving those tankers where people cut in front of me, cut me off, hit the brakes. I guarantee you, I'm thinking of one issue downtown. I had a car come to a full braking stop, and I've got 3,500 gallons of sewage, I'm sorry, soil additive in my tanker. If I'd have hit him, it wouldn't have been a matter of, uh, we've got tapers on, I would have been off work. We need insurance. It needs to be able to stand beside us. We need to be able to have confidence in the people we work for. I could throw a few more things at you, but, um, as long as we know we're looked after safety-wise, insurance-wise, our children can be covered, and we can take them into a hospital for whatever, you will always have us come back to work. But there are some of us that are gonna stand up if we don't believe in it. Randy, I think you and Dave Ripma and Glenn White were here when we almost struck. I didn't like it, but I'd do it again. We want a fair wage. We're not asking to break the bank, but there's got to be a balance somewhere. I could go on. Um, there are others who want to speak. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions regarding me, ask me.
Thank you, Noel. Appreciate it. Same row. If not the same row, how about the row behind? Yeah, go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Uh, Nick Gramstad, city of Portland. Uh, good evening, council members. I don't think I've met most of you. I'm the assistant planner for the city of Troutdale. If you've gone out and bought anything in the past couple of years, costs of goods and services are skyrocketing, um, and our wages have not reflected that adjustment. That's been happening for the past, I think, two years and for this coming year. Uh, we're not asking for much. We are asking for our COLA to be in line with inflation and the rising price of goods. Uh, we want to continue to, continue to serve and work, uh, as members of the city to the best of our ability and not be concerned about bills, um, or rent as prices skyrocket. Um, so I understand you guys aren't a part of the bargaining, uh, table, um, but you are all influential people with communication to city managers. Um, so I urge you all to reach out and express concern that we're not being paid fair wages.
Thanks. Thank you, Nick. Uh, same row as Nick. Row behind, anybody wishes to speak? Yeah, please. Same thing. State your name and city of residence for the record.
Thank you, uh, mayor, councilors. I'm Steve Fancher. I am assistant city manager for the city of Gresham, and I'm the, uh, chair of the board for the Urban Flood Safety and Water Quality District. I'm joined today by Jim Idaw. He is the executive director of the Urban Flood Safety and Water Quality District. Um, I'll mention the district recently, oh, I'm sorry, I reside in the city of Gresham. I believe Jim resides in the city of Portland. Recently, the district, uh, reached a major milestone, as you may know, by passing a geo-bond, uh, measure that will leverage $100 million in federal funding to upgrade the levy system and bring it up to current safety standards and, and allow flood insurance, um, to be retained by properties, among, amongst other things. Um, but we're really here today to acknowledge the great service that we've had from two of our board members that are representing Troutdale in this area. Uh, those are Council Ripma, um, and also, uh, we have Tanny Staffenson, who's here. He's the official representative of the Sandy Drange Improvement Company. But I want to, uh, commend both of them as the, the board chair in how they've represented you and represented, uh, the city, uh, both with great passion, both of them. Um, but I can also say definitively, I don't know that, um, any, any of our board members works as hard as these two in representing you guys. Um, so I just want to commend their service.
I'm gonna pile on just a little bit. Uh, as the administrator of all the agencies, I've had the extreme good fortune to be able to work with both Council Ripma and Tanny. Uh, Council Ripma has been incredibly principled throughout this entire process and has been focused on the interests of the residents of Troutdale above all else, and he's made a difference. He didn't get everything he wanted, but costs for Troutdale are lower than they would have been but for Council Ripma's efforts. Tanny, uh, as I know you are all aware, has been a great mentor for me in learning about Troutdale. He's taken hours of his time to meet with me in person, via phone, via screen, to help me understand the context that you guys are working in, the context of the people and businesses of Troutdale. He's also worked to find very innovative and creative solutions to both substantive and political challenges that have helped advance this process. And I just say, he, he steps up to facilitate very challenging board meetings when asked. He serves as the budget committee chair. Uh, and again, just has gone above and beyond what I see in our other board members in spending the time necessary to help me understand, but also to represent the people of Troutdale. So I just, on behalf of the staff, want to thank both Council Ripma and Mr. Staffenson for their service, and I hope that they'll be sticking around and helping manage the flood system as we move forward into the future. So, uh, you have a great couple of citizens here who are representing you very well, and we're very fortunate to be able to work with them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Oh, wow. We're clapping. Um, same row. Anybody else wishes to speak to council? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna close public comment. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and concerns. Let's move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda, uh, 3.1 minutes. May 14th, 2024, city council regular meeting, 3.2 resolution. A resolution improving an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CB, CDBG, Program and Home Investment Partnership Program for program years 2025 and 2027. Let's take a roll. Yeah, thank you.
I move, uh, adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll second. Seconded. Now, let's take a roll. Jump the gun. It's like, let's go.
Council Glantz.
Is that me?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Ripma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Council Wynn.
Yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Move on to agenda item number four. A motion accepting the selection committee's recommendation for appointments to all city-standing committees. Prior to accepting the motion, is there any discussion? And we will take public comment on this matter. Let's actually go ahead and open up public comment now. Public comment is open on agenda item number four. A motion accepting the selection committee's recommendation for appointments to all city-standing committees. Anybody in Zoom wishes to make comment on this agenda item? Please unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Mayor Lauer, Paul Wilcox.
Good evening, Mr. Wilcox. Go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to mention, I'm having trouble hearing quite a few people. I can hardly hear Kendah and the people at the testimony, testimony table also. My comment on this agenda item is, I noticed on the list that came out that, um, three of the committees and commissions had vacancies, unfilled vacancies, yet there were, um, alternates. So I would think the alternates would be moved into the vacant positions.
One second. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Any other comments on Zoom? All right. Anybody in council chambers wishes to make comment regarding agenda item number four? All right, let's close public comment.
I'll make a motion.
Council Ripma.
I move we accept the selection committee's recommendation for appointments to all city-standing committees.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right. Let's go ahead and take a roll.
Council Glantz.
Yes.
Council Ripma.
Yes.
Council Caswell.
Yes.
Council Wynn.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Uh, yes.
Council White.
Yes.
Council Wittrin.
Yes.
Okay, passes. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, for your comments. Uh, let's move on to agenda item number five. A request from Emilio Inc. for the city of Troutdale to sponsor the Run for Red event on June 15th and the Community Health Fest on August 3rd. Jennifer, Jennifer Hoffman, I believe you are on Zoom. I see you.
Yep, I'm here. Um, first of all, just wanted to say thank you and apologize for not being able to make last month's meeting, so I feel like this is a little rushed. Um, my mom was actually in ICU and passed on the 14th, so that's why I wasn't at the last meeting. Um, anyway, moving forward, we are still planning the Run for Red, and I was, um, it was recommended that I come and speak to the city of Troutdale about possibly requesting some monetary, um, help from you guys, um, in regards to our mission and what the money is raised for and what we do. Um, I'm not sure if all of you are familiar with the nonprofit Emilio Inc.
I believe, uh, I believe everyone is for the most part, but if you want to, please go ahead and
Okay. Um, well, yesterday, um, was the anniversary of the Reynolds High School shooting. Um, the victim at the Reynolds High School shooting was my son, Emilio Hoffman. Um, as part of my grief and kind of trying to push forward, I developed a nonprofit to bring awareness, um, to the needs of youth mental health in our community. And for 10 years, we've been doing all sorts of things in the community. We help other events, um, we provide funds to different schools, um, to run social emotional learning groups. Uh, one of our biggest events is a rummage sale that is scheduled to happen next month. All of the funds from that, um, we work closely with all of the school counselors in East County and provide, um, back-to-school gift cards so kids can go back to school happy and confident. Um, we have also participated and funded, um, Challenge Day, which is a national program, um, for anti-bullying. So Run for Red is, um, it's a, you know, mostly, it's called Run for Red, but most people actually walk. It's a 2.9K out in, uh, Wood Village at the park out there, the Robert Donaldson Park. And during that event, um, the participants walk, um, 2.9K, and they learn about different mental health facts regarding, um, youth. And then they receive like a medal and a t-shirt at the end. So that is the Run for Red, and that event is scheduled to happen this Saturday, the 15th. Um, as you can imagine, there are quite a few fees that go into, you know, putting on a big event. As a small nonprofit, you know, we do try to keep our costs down, and any type of support would be wonderful and would help us a lot.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, question.
Uh, let's go. Councilor White asked how much you're requesting, and then Councilor Glantz has her hand up.
Okay. Um, as far as a specific request, I'm not sure. I've never come to a city council meeting to request any amount of funds. So I would say, you know, right now, um, our expenses are $2,900, and any portion of that, that the city of Troutdale would be willing to help with would be fantastic. I mean, I think that's a lot to ask for, so I would never do that, but, um, you know, anything to help cover any of those costs would actually just put more money back into the kids.
Counselor Glantz?
Yeah, I'm wondering what the money has been used for in the past and how much have you made off of the event?
Um, last year, um, we had just over 100 participants, and it actually cost money, um, to have the event last year. We didn't ask for any help or any sponsors. Um, the money in the past events, like the rummage sale, like I said, is used for gift cards, um, to go back to school, um, Challenge Day, the anti-bullying program. This year, I think we will have a profit off Run for Red. We already have about 170 people that are registered this year, and the goal was, um, to double what we did last year.
Uh, Council Caswell.
Yeah, thank you so much, um, for, uh, coming before us. Um, and, uh, this is, this is an area where, um, I would feel really comfortable saying, you know, um, we, we should be generous here, and this is an investment in our kids. And, um, and I just see you honoring, uh, your son's life and, um, want to recognize you for that. And, uh, so thank you, um, for your time in, in being here. And I personally think that, uh, you know, the city should cover what you're asking for. Um, and this is such an important and needed, uh, um, investment in our youth. Um, so, so I wanted to say thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate having the time to speak and even being heard. It's, it feels good to, you know, get this in front of more people and ask for support because it's a lot of work. It's, all of it is a lot of work. Um, but I feel very proud to still be standing after 10 years. And, you know, all of our events just keep growing and getting bigger. Um, but our, you know, our fundraising efforts are very much mom and pop. You know, we're out collecting cans and, you know, doing five-day rummage sales and picking things up. So, I mean, it's worth it because it's our kids. It's our kids everywhere, you know, at all levels of the schools. Last year, we helped about 255 kids in East County go back to school. And, I mean, it was anonymous. We never even put it, you know, I think when people need help, sometimes they feel a little bit of shame or embarrassment. So we just work directly with the, the counselors and give them gift cards anonymously.
Yeah, this, this is just such an easy, uh, yes in my mind. Um, if I want to start the conversation about that, then, um, if anyone else wants to speak, I'll, I'll yield, but that's, that's my position for sure.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Wittrin?
Yeah, out of the, uh, kids you helped, how mature directly here in the Troutdale area?
Um, I, I don't have an exact answer on that. I would say, I mean, my rough estimate, probably 60 to 70%. Uh, I usually, um, do the Reynolds School District first, and then, you know, we, you know, we do give a few cards to Gresham, um, Barlow. I think last year, we did three kids from Sandy High School. You know, I'm never gonna say no, no matter where the kid is at, if they need help. So, but I do put it out to our Troutdale schools first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from council? I have a question. Uh, Jennifer, have you approached, uh, city of Wood Village or city of Fairview as well?
Um, the city of Fairview, I have not. The city of Wood Village, um, graciously, you know, hosts this event. We've partnered with a couple other events for them, like their, their community events. We bring a bunch of volunteers and help them, and this year, they, um, wrote a grant, and I don't know if I'm supposed to say it or not. I'm not, definitely not a professional, but, um, I'm not, definitely not a professional, but, um, so excuse me if I'm wrong. Um, they did write a grant for $750 of our expenses.
Good, that's good. Um, Counsel Caswell, if you wanted to, like you said, kickstart the conversation, go ahead.
Yeah, um, what, what was the figure that, uh, can you remind, um, us what, what the figure was that you mentioned? It was, it was, uh, was it 2,500?
It's 2,900 right now. And, uh, Wood Village has actually covered $750 of that.
Yeah, I, I would just, um, uh, put forward that we cover the rest of what you need.
Wow, that would be so amazing.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, for, for me, this isn't even, it's not even a question, it's our kids. It's, um, look at what you're doing and, and turning such a tragedy into, um, a powerful position and stance. And, um, and, and I really think that that's such an important thing. Um, and it's the least the city can do. So, yeah, I, I'd like to start that conversation for sure. It's not, not about money.
Thank you.
So my superior, um, I went to Gresham High School, math skills, and I learned how to use a calculator there. Um, so that's, I believe that's a $2,150, um, what's remaining from that $2,900 and the $750 from Wood Village.
And if my, inside my head, that's about 70%, which is about the kids that she was servicing here, which is in line with, I'm, as a conversation, I'm in, I'm in support.
Okay, Counsel Glance?
Yeah, I think we should match more of what Wood Village did, and I'm not saying that this is in any way a bad program. I think there's a lot of programs out there, and this is taxpayer money. This isn't how we feel personally. So I think it's better to be a little bit more conservative at this point.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from council? We don't technically have a motion on the table, so...
Do we have budget for, uh, a donation of this kind? Is there a place in the budget?
There's a place in the budget, we can put it, and it will show up at next meeting's budget adjustments.
Nice.
All we need from the council is just a motion so that we have an official council action that allocates the funds so that the auditors are happy.
Well, I'll make a motion then, yeah, that we, we, I forgot the figure. Pardon, pardon my, um, poor memory with the number. But, um, but yeah, the, the figure that we determined, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we cover that. Can you remind me what that was?
$2,150.
Okay, $2,150. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the City of Troutdale cover that amount.
Okay. I will second that. Seconded by Counsel Woodruff? All right. Discussion?
Well, uh, any further discussion of, uh, Counsel Glance's idea? Which I think, Sandy, you were thinking 750.
Correct.
You were thinking 750.
Yep, there's a lot of different programs and things we can donate to. And again, I'm not saying in any way this is bad, but I also want to represent the people who are actually paying it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, uh, if we're in discussion, the, uh, this hasn't, we haven't donated to this before. I, it sounds like a worthy cause, but, um, I don't know. I, I guess I'm more, uh, for compromising, uh, is there any, um, support for 1,500 or something like that? Some compromise? Go ahead, I mean, sorry, I'm done.
Let's go to Counsel Caswell really quick. Counsel Caswell?
Yeah, I, I personally don't want to be known as the city that even negotiated a second thought in, in funding this. Um, this is such a tragedy that happened in our, our, uh, our high school. I mean, um, uh, you know, uh, life was lost, and, and his mother's coming before us. Um, and, and, you know, just, just even that we would pause to do this. I don't want to be, uh, known as the city that paused, um, in, in having this conversation.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Woodruff?
We gave significantly more to the Jazz Festival and didn't even have nearly as much conversation, I didn't think, in, thinking about it. And to me, this is a much more worthy cause, homegrown roots, cause directly in our backyard affecting our students. I'm on board with Counsel Caswell. We, we spend money on other things that are less significant, I believe, in my opinion, so...
So what I hear is Counsel Woodruff hates jazz. Counsel Glance?
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I don't want to put this in negotiation terms, but what concerns me is that there's a lot of good, uh, programs out there for youth and kids that we could be, you know, helping with financially, and we can't do it all. And there's nothing that says all of us here can't go make a personal donation tonight, um, based on how we personally feel. But again, these aren't our personal dollars, these are, are, you know, tax dollars. So I'd like to think that we're not just saying, oh, this person came before us and they do have a great program, so let's give them, you know, a fair amount of money, um, rather than being a little bit more conservative about it.
Okay, Counsel Caswell, I'll get to you in just a second, anybody else? Counsel White?
Yeah, I just, I remember when, um, for a few groups, we were giving them the Sam Cox Building Rent Free, and it, it's kind of snowballed on us, because then, yeah, every, every group in town wanted the, the freebie from the... So I, I kind of get it, I like to help out, but I don't know that Troutdale should have to put the, the full amount. I, I consider a friendly amendment at the $1,500 level. But there is a motion on the floor, so it would just be a friendly amendment. And, um, we do have to be careful of the taxpayers' money. Hate to say that. It's hard to say it in front of you, Jennifer, and, you know, I feel your grief and sorry you lost your mother. And I wanted to say too that, um, I love the, the Christmas lights you put up every year on the roof of your house. I have noticed those.
Thank you. I, again, I am just really grateful for any amount of, of support and help. Um, we do, we, we do lots of different things to try to fundraise. And, I mean, of course, it would be beautiful to have it all covered, but that was never the expectation. Just having Troutdale any, in any way behind us would feel great. And there are a lot of different, um, programs and a lot of really great things. Um, and we are there to support them as well, in any way that we can.
I'll comment really quick. I'm more in favor of, um, voting for Counsel Caswell's, um, motion. This is an event that affected, rocked our entire community. It rocked not only Troutdale, but all of East County, all of Portland, all of Vancouver, all of Camas, all of, um, counties that responded to this event. Um, it rocked my personal community, um, my small business, my family. Um, so this is something that I believe that Troutdale, um, should support. Um, I, I agree with Counsel Glance that there are plenty of worthy causes out there. The difference is, is, um, Hoffman Inc. and, and Emilio Inc. and Jennifer Hoffmann are here tonight asking, uh, for support from Troutdale. So I'm, again, more in favor of aligning with, um, the motion on the table, uh, with supporting and supplying, uh, Emilio Inc. with 2,150. Any other discussion?
Well, it sounds like the friendly amendment isn't being accepted by the movement or the senator. Uh, am I reading that right? Allison?
Uh, can you say that again?
Uh, what, that you, you, you do not, you do not wish to accept Glenn's proposed friendly amendment?
No, no, I, I think it's, I think we're haggling over details that are ridiculous. We, we need to support this woman, and I don't even know if it's appropriate for me to say this, but like, if we don't, if we don't do this tonight, like, I'm just going to write you a check. This is, this is, this is something that, um, is, is such a courageous move, uh, on her part, to be here, um, after such an unthinkable loss. And it's truly like the least we can do, you know? Um, so, no, uh, we've, we need to get behind this.
Okay, any other discussion on the matter? Counsel White?
I just had a question, what, what does a Run for Red represent?
Well, our, um, I don't know if you've ever seen our logo. It's a pair of, um, red Converse tennis shoes. And Emilio loved, um, fashion and tennis shoes. And his last ask from me was a pair of red Converse. And, um, he never got them. I mean, he had several other pairs, um, but that's where the red Converse come in. And, you know, many people see our logo as the red Converse, but don't really know the story of, of why it is. So Run for Red is, just means run for Emilio and support the, the youth mental health.
Great. All right, no more discussion on the matter? All right, let's take a vote. Kenda?
Counsel Glance?
No.
Counsel Rittman?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell?
Yes.
Counsel One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
All right, passes. Jennifer, the city, the city will, um, donate $2,150 to the Run for Red event, Emilio Inc., um, not just the Run for Red event. And so, um, I'd imagine Mr. Ray Young or Mr. Eric Mueller will be in contact.
Wow, thank you all so very much. I am shaking, I cannot, wow, this is going to be amazing. I can't wait to tell you guys what we do with this.
Well, let's do that, let's plan for that. How about we plan for you to come back, uh, to council and tell us about the event, how well it went, the reach that you hope that this event has throughout East County and the youth that you're, you're devoting your life to serve?
Thank you, I will do that.
Great, thank you, Jennifer, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing, A Resolution Certifying The City of Troutdale's Eligibility and Election to Receive State Shared Revenues for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Mr. Mueller? You have the con.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, thank you. Uh, yes, uh, Agenda Item Number Six, uh, for those of you that have been on the council know, it's a, uh, annual event that, uh, we walk through, uh, as part of, uh, statutes. The, uh, state provides a, what's referred to as state shared revenues. Uh, as I outlined in the staff report, there's a, a number of administrative steps that we have to take, but, uh, there are basically three public, uh, actions that occur. Uh, the first one occurred at the Budget Committee meeting on, uh, April the 17th, where, uh, there was a, uh, public comment, public hearing period for the, uh, as the statute requires, the possible uses of state shared revenues. Uh, tonight, before the council would take any action, we'll need to have a public hearing before the city council on the distinction they make in the statute is on the proposed uses of the state shared revenue. Um, and then the, uh, the resolution, uh, needs to certify both the city's eligibility, uh, in terms of being qualified to receive state shared revenues, as well as declaring that, yes, the city would choose to receive them. Uh, as I provided in the, uh, staff report, um, and as we reviewed at the Budget Committee meetings there, the Exhibit A is the, uh, the estimated state shared revenues that we expect for the coming fiscal year. Um, as we talked about back in April, the vast majority of the revenues is the, uh, state gasoline tax. Uh, 99% of that goes into the, uh, street fund and is used for the street maintenance and preservation and reconstruction and so forth. Uh, 1% of that, based on statute, goes into the, uh, bike and paths fund as part of the requirement from the state. Uh, the, the remaining five, $600,000 is from the liquor tax, cigarette tax, and general revenue sharing, which are general purpose revenues, which are, uh, go into the general fund. Um, and then the, uh, resolution, as I mentioned, uh, specifies that we're, we're certifying that the city is qualified. There's a number of items that the, uh, are required to be, uh, qualified. For, uh, the, the city, we have to provide four or more of police protection, fire protection, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, planning, zoning, subdivision control, and one or more utility services. Well, of the seven that are listed in the statute, the city provides all, so we more than meet the requirements. So, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to address any questions the council may have, uh, before you go to your public hearing. Or after.
Any, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Mueller from council? All right, not seeing anybody jump at the chance. Let's go ahead and start the public hearing. Public hearing is now open regarding, uh, Agenda Item Number Six, A Resolution Certifying The City of Troutdale's Eligibility and Election to Receive State Shared Revenues for Fiscal Year 24-25. Uh, if you'd wish to make comment during this public hearing, now's the time. Uh, on Zoom, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Uh, Mayor Lauer, Paul Wilcox.
Mr. Wilcox, go ahead.
Uh, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale. Uh, this is actually in reference to a shared revenue the city isn't receiving. And I'll just, uh, briefly read what I, what I've written, just to keep it succinct. "Let's say that in November, voters prefer that the city not continue losing the marijuana tax receipts and do not uphold ordinance number 8A2. When would the city then be eligible again to receive the taxes paid by local retailers?"
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Anybody in Zoom, or I'm sorry, anybody in council chambers wishes to make comment on Agenda Item Number Six? During public hearing, all right? Not seeing anybody. Enclosed public hearing. Uh, any other comments or questions from council? Any discussion? Um, all right. Mr. Mueller?
I need counsel to pass the resolution. Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution certifying the City of Troutdale's eligibility and election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year 2024-2025. All right. Kenda, please.
Counsel Glance?
Yes.
Counsel Rittman?
Yes.
Counsel Caswell?
Yes.
Counsel One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you, sir, thank you, everybody. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Hearings, followed by two more resolutions. 7.1, A Resolution Adopting The City of Troutdale's Fiscal Year 24-25 Annual Budget and Making Appropriations, followed by 7.2, Resolution Imposing and Categorizing Advilorm Taxes for Fiscal Year 24-25. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I wanted to give our budget chair, who's, uh, in attendance, the opportunity to come up and join me if he wants to make some, uh, comments at some point, uh, whenever he is, uh, is able to be with us when we do budget adaption. I do want to make sure we have that opportunity. Uh, but as I outlined in the staff report, uh, we've walked through the process again this year. I had the, uh, meetings in April, the budget committee went through their deliberations, made modifications to the budget. Uh, the, then the budget committee, uh, provided a, or created the approved budget from the, from the proposed budget. The budget was published, uh, with some errors on my part, uh, as required, but, uh, the publications... but uh the publications required, not the errors. But uh the correction of those is uh typically is, happens enough that it's routinely referenced in the uh budget manual. So I, I've documented it in the uh staff report. And uh the other requirement is that I notify the council uh of the, that the error occurred in the publication. As I mentioned in the staff report, it's not that the budget itself is in error or that there's a problem with it. It's just the publication in the newspaper on my preparation of, of it. So um with that, um, before we go to the uh public hearing portion, I wanted to give our budget chair the opportunity to make any comments that he would like to uh before the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller, Tanny Staffinson, Budget Committee Chair. Good evening, Mayor Lauer, councilors. Um, as we all serve on the Budget Committee, you know, there's uh the council and the mayor, and there's seven citizens. And uh everyone has the same vote, and we appreciate that. Um, we're all here to do the work for the city, and um it's a lot to do. It's seventy-three million dollars of somebody else's money, and I think we all take that very seriously. We're, as we know, we're coming into some tough times. Uh, you look at it, this budget's uh six point six million in the red at this point. And that's a lot. That's twenty-seven percent. And um I guess what I would ask at this point in time is um that everyone vote the same way they did at the budget meetings. Uh, just so that we're consistent. You guys do have the ability to change it, but the citizens would always appreciate if you upheld their will. And um we'll just need to be really creative going forward on how to balance things in the future and give the citizens the services they expect from us. Any questions?
Comments or questions from council? Not seeing anybody jump at the chance.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we need the uh, a public hearing on the, the budget for adoption.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open up the, or begin the public hearing. We'll start with Resolution Seven Point One, A Resolution Adopting the City of Troutdale's Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Budget Making Appropriations. Uh, anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make comment regarding Seven Point One? Anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment? Now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public hearing for Agenda Item Seven Point Two. Let's go ahead and move through that before we go to our public hearing. Mr. Mueller? Oh, do we need to vote individually?
Yeah, we, if, if we could vote on Seven Point One, and then we'll move to Seven Point Two, if you would, Mr. Mayor.
Let's do that.
I want a motion to adopt Resolution Seven Point One, A Resolution Adopting the City of Troutdale's Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Budget and Making Appropriations.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay. Kenda?
Counselor Lance?
Yes.
Counselor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor Haswell?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
No.
Counselor Richard?
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to Agenda Item Seven Point Two, Resolution Imposing and Categorizing Ad Valorem Taxes for Fiscal Year 2024-25.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, certainly welcome to take comment on it, but uh the statute or the local budget law doesn't require a hearing on this particular action. Uh, but welcome to take it, should you so choose. Uh, the budget that you just adopted includes a portion of the resources come from the property tax levy for the General Fund, as well as the specific debt service uh levy for the general obligation bonds, uh, the refinanced bonds for the uh police facility. Uh, those are both outlined in your staff report and as we had reviewed in the uh, the budget uh during the Budget Committee meetings. Uh, the resolution provides for what's referred to as the categorization uh both in and out, out of the Measure Five limitations. Uh, the uh, the permanent rate of the city is uh three dollars and seven six five two per thousand of assessed value. Um, and then the debt service fund for the coming year is three hundred and fifty-six thousand, uh, the, the levy that's excluded from uh the Measure Five provisions. And uh with that, I'm happy to address any questions the council may have on uh this item.
Comments or questions? All right, not seeing anybody. Uh, let's just go ahead and open up public comment. So public comments open on this time. Seven point two, A Resolution Imposing and Categorizing Ad Valorem Taxes for Fiscal Year 2024-25. On Zoom, if anybody wishes to make comment, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, anybody in council? All right, close public comment. No more discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll take, make a motion for a resolution adopting a resolution imposing and categorize ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year twenty, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second.
All right.
Counselor Lance?
Yes.
Counselor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor Haswell?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Richard?
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Don't go far. We'll see you in a little bit. Agenda Item Number Eight, A Public Hearing, Ordinance First Introduced on May fourteen, twenty twenty-four, An Ordinance Adopting Text Amendments to Chapter Three and Appendix A of the Troutdale Development Code. Erica Palmer, Community Development Director, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Councilor Erica Palmer, Community Development Director. So before you tonight is a development code package that came from a Metro twenty forty Planning and Community Grant that was started in two thousand eighteen. This project wrapped up right around the first of twenty twenty-one, and we all kind of know what happened between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, um, COVID. And this project was kind of set to the side and never actually picked back up and went through the process for consideration um through Planning Commission and City Council. So Metro has come back to planning staff and has asked us to close out this grant that's been open since two thousand eighteen. So here we are tonight. Um, you have an ordinance in, in front of you um to consider adoption. We took this code amendment package to Planning Commission um to get their recommendation. And staff's recommendation to Planning Commission was to not adopt this code amendment package at this time. Um, there's good things in this code amendment package, but since we've made additional changes to our development code between twenty twenty, between twenty twenty-one and now, this package doesn't align fully with our development code. Um, Planning Commission heard staff, um, they went through the code amendments and agreed that there are some good things um that should be picked up in the future, but at, at this time, uh Planning Commission's recommendation uh was for denial. We didn't receive any um public comments during that hearing process. Um, we haven't received any public comments through this hearing process. Um, this is kind of a technical aspect of just closing out this grant. And planning staff, we planned to kind of pick up this amendment package again um and tease out um what we like and have further conversations with the community as well. So with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Counselor Ripma?
Just a technical question. If uh, and this is probably, should go to our lawyer. If, and I, as I recall from the last meeting, we are not, we don't want to adopt this. At least I'm gonna not want to adopt it. Do we move for non-adoption? Or should we move consideration of the ordinance and then vote no? What, what is the best way to go?
Mr. Matthew Call, I believe the question is more of a procedural question that Council President Ripma just stated.
Yes, uh, good evening, council. Could you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I would suggest that, that you would do that as just the emotion for the, uh, for the item, and then just vote no on that. That's what your desire is?
All right, thank you.
And so that's better than just not making a motion and letting the ordinance die?
Oh, no, we, we need to vote on it, I believe.
Okay, good. I love voting no on Metro, so I'm fine with it. Um, sorry, that was my inside voice talking, my inside my head voice talking. Um, okay. Any comments, questions, or discussion from council? Any needing for clarification as to why we're voting no on this? All right. I am gonna open up the public hearing, and so we'll give an opportunity for the public to comment. Public hearings open on Agenda Item Number Eight, An Ordinance First Introduced on May fourteen, twenty twenty-four, An Ordinance Adopting Text Amendments to Chapter Three and Appendix A of the Troutdale Development Code. Uh, anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment during this public hearing? Now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers? Mr. Staffinson?
Good evening, Mayor Lauer, City Councilor Tanny Staffinson. Um, the Planning Commission uh saw this item uh several times over a, a number of years, uh, with the first time being a three cities Planning Commission meeting uh that was held, and we voiced, voiced quite a few concerns that we had at that time and um tried to get some of those worked into this, and that really didn't happen very successfully. But if you look at, we did get MU one, two, and three out of this. And there could be some other positive things that could be gleaned from this, but overall, as a package, um, we didn't feel it fit in with where Troutdale was trying to go uh very well at all. And so um I believe we were actually six zip on ours, on our vote.
I believe so.
Uh, because we have one member that was um out. And so I don't think it was six one, I think it was six zero.
Okay. Because in the staff, in the staff report, it says six one, I believe. Okay.
I don't think we had any in favor.
Okay.
And so we were uh looking for denial as well.
Okay.
It's our recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else in council chambers? All right, not seeing anybody else. I'm gonna close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ripma?
With the understanding that I intend to vote no on this, but I move that the council consider an ordinance adopting text amendments to Chapter Three and Appendix A of the Troutdale Development Code.
Second.
Okay. All right.
Counselor Lance?
No.
Counselor Ripma?
No.
Counselor Haswell?
No.
Counselor One?
No.
Mayor Lauer?
Nope.
Counselor White?
No.
Counselor Richard?
No.
All right, thank you for not passing. It did not pass.
One question for Eric.
Yeah, please.
Can you give us the status of the Halsey Court or Executive Committee? Are they still meeting?
I believe they are when agenda items come up.
Okay, because I haven't seen any correspondence.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your work. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item. It is public hearing night. Agenda Item Number Nine, Public Hearing, Ordinance First Introduced on May fourteen, twenty twenty-four, An Ordinance Amending Municipal Code Section fifteen point one two pertaining to updated state fire code. Mr. Ray Young?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this uh ordinance is the second reading, the adoption tonight. It involves one of three changes to our um code regarding fire issues that we've discussed. And this is the one that the council was very comfortable and consensus was, we should pass this one. Um, it is the one that simply changes our code to reflect the current state fire code. We had been locked into the two thousand seven code that doesn't exist anymore. And so it updates it to the current code and then make sure that whenever the state fire marshal processes through a change in the uh state fire code, it gets updated along with it. The second significant change is, is the Gresham Fire Department is called Gresham Fire Department, now not Gresham Fire and Emergency Services. And so it reflects a change in our current provider of fire services. So that is the limit of the change, and uh our citizens should not notice any impact of passing this ordinance, but it gives us our current uh ordinance to reflect uh current realities.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from council? Uh, Counsel White?
So is this the end of this then, or?
Well, I was thinking of slipping in a burn band when you were gone, but yeah, you caught me, so I guess I won't. Yes, uh, at this point, we have no plans to bring any other fire-related um ordinance. It's the council.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, not seeing anybody. Let's go ahead and open up our public hearing. Public hearings now open for Ordinance First Introduced, May fourteen, twenty twenty-four, An Ordinance Amending Municipal Code, Section fifteen point one two pertaining to updated state fire code. Uh, anybody in council wishes to make comment tonight? Anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment? Now's your chance. Go and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing.
Make a motion?
Woo.
To accept the ordinance, an ordinance amending the municipal code, Section fifteen dot one two pertaining to updated state fire code.
I'll second that.
Counselor Lance?
Yes.
Counselor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor Haswell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Richard?
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Ten. Hey, look, it's another public hearing. Ordinance First Introduced Tonight, An Ordinance Amending the Park and Recreation Areas, Chapter thirteen point two zero, Troutdale Municipal Code Providing for Limitation of City Liability Under the Oregon Public Use of Lands Act. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, as I mentioned in the staff report, uh, we touched on this back in, in April when we brought a resolution to you to uh take uh on the record some of the changes that the legislature had uh put in place during the short session uh earlier this year. And I had mentioned at that time that I'd be bringing back a uh ordinance change uh in order to update the uh, the ordinance. Uh, a number of the sections of this part of the uh, the ordinance on parks haven't, hadn't been updated since uh two thousand four. And of course, there's been a number of changes on the legal landscape related to uh liability and, and so forth. As I mentioned back in April, there had been a court case where uh the the court had ruled in favor of the municipality as providing for recreational immunity. But the appeals court, in their uh, shall I say ivory tower contemplative uh perspective of the meanings of different words and the legal nuances without necessarily the uh, the uh, the on-the-ground considerations, had chosen to refer it back to the uh, to the court and decided that uh an improved trail wasn't covered, whereas an unimproved trail was, and determined that hiking was covered, but walking wasn't, and a whole number of twists and turns that created a whole lot of uncertainty for recreation uh opportunities around the state. That's largely what prompted the legislature to take the action they did during the short session. In any case, the updates to our municipal code are to try and capture all of the uh, the changes that have occurred since two thousand four, fill in any of the gaps that, that might be there. Uh, and I suspect that we'll be back a year from now because the legislature is already has a committee, work group, task force, whatever it is, uh, working on additional changes to it for the, the longer legislative session uh for uh twenty twenty-five. Uh, one of the things in our code, uh, one, one of the issues that was in the court case and then, and related to the immunity was trails. And turns out that whereas there was, based on my search uh in, through the uh Parks Master Plan that was adopted last year, there was forty-four instances where we talked about trails, which is great. But nowhere in our municipal code, in this section, did we ever mention what a trail was or define it or address it. So that's part of the updates that we're doing, um, easements and so forth. easements and so forth, and then the liability section to incorporate the protections that are provided under the updated statute. So that's really all that is involved here, the vast majority, as I mentioned in the attachment there. Sections 31 through 419 don't, are not changed at all. It's just a few things up at the beginning in the definition section, and this additional limited liability section added is, is the final section in that part of the municipal code. There is no vote on the matter tonight, it's simply the introduction, and I'm happy to address any questions that the council may have.
Counsel Glance?
Yeah, just going off trail and, you know, climbing in places they shouldn't, that's...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
So it's not just necessarily trails? If someone's, you know, hiking in an area that isn't a trail and has gone off trail, that's still covered?
Well, there's different provisions in the law related to unauthorized use versus authorized use, and, you know, dedicated facilities versus, you know, are you are you in an unauthorized area and therefore you're trespassing rather than recreating? So, you know, it'd be a very fact-specific kind of circumstance to address in that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Let's go ahead and open up public hearing at this time. Public hearing is now open for an ordinance amending the park and recreation areas, Chapter 13.20 of the Troutdale Municipal Code providing for limitation of city liability under the Oregon Public Use of Lands Act. If you wish to make comment now, go ahead on Zoom, unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. Not seeing anybody, anybody in council chambers tonight? Not seeing anybody, all right, let's go ahead and close public hearing. Any other comments, discussion?
Unless there's questions from the council, then I'll bring it back at the next council meeting for the second reading and hopefully adoption.
All right, that's a good thing, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to agenda item number 11, an update Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group. Mr. Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Monday night on June 3, the Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group had a meeting, and we covered a lot of stuff and had a good meeting last Monday night. The primary focus of the meeting last week was to get a presentation from a company called Praxis, which is a political consulting firm in Portland that's done a number of work with municipalities in regards to ballot measures. Particularly, they came and talked about the process for proceeding to ask the voters to approve a fire district for your jurisdiction. They also talked about the differences between a joining Fire District 10 or creating a new Fire District, the different mechanisms to go through to get both those locations. And we learned a lot of stuff about the two processes. One for me that stood out was the, how the process worked is it seems that if you do try to join Fire District 10, every single jurisdiction that wants to has to have their own separate vote, where they vote to go to Fire District 10, and Fire District 10 has to have its own separate vote for every single one of those cities who want in. So essentially, if Gresham and Troutdale, Wood Village, and Fairview all want to join Fire District 10, that's essentially eight ballots, four for us, four for Fire District 10. However, they said that if you create a new Fire District, which would have to generate out of the Multnomah County Commissioners as a vote from them, but it would be one area vote that would approve a new Fire District. So we went through a lot of details like this. We also went through a lot of the strategy, the timelines that you go through for being able to properly put it on the ballot, how you do it. You know, things such as which elections are the best to put, you know, these kind of ballot measures on. So we had a really good discussion, I had a lot of questions from the committee. So that was a good coverage and good information, because that's one of the options the city is exploring, is pursuing a new Fire District or joining Fire District 10. So kind of knowing what it takes to go that route was really insightful. If the council would like, I, they had a, gosh, a 30-page, 36-page PowerPoint presentation that I'm more than happy to forward to the other five council members who weren't at the meeting. And so I'm happy to do that, so I'll look at the nod at least from one. Okay, and Counselor Glance was at the meeting, I do send her one, other four will get it. Other four, I'll send this to you to look through. Then the, I gave an update to the committee on how the law enforcement area was going and how the fire contract was going. And what I told about law enforcement is that I had met on April 30th with the sheriff and her business office finance team, had a great meeting where we talked through the recommendations we had for the changes in FTE if we went with Multnomah County Sheriff again. That was a good discussion. They also said, well, the thing that we haven't done either is in the contract, you know, first time we did it, we had you pay for one FTE for a detective, one FTE for a staff office administrative person, and one FTE for a records tech. We don't know if we needed more or less than that. So we're going to go back and look at that and figure it out ourselves to see if we want to ask for a change in FTE in another contract. So then we're going to go back, crunch some numbers, look at some time stuff, and sometime in the middle of this month, it's on my calendar next week, to follow up with them to find out where they at with that analysis, so we could sit down and at least initially agree on what a starting point for an FTE load in the contract should be. So then we can start putting numbers to that to see what it would cost for them to renew their contract for another 10 years. So that was a good discussion, a good meeting, and they were really open to the things that we wanted in the contract. So we'll get that soon. The second thing we have going on is Jensen Strategies is finishing up their report on what it would cost to establish a Troutdale Police Department again, and what it would cost annually take to support that in our budget. I went through them on Friday afternoon, their draft report. We made some changes, talked about some things to add into that report, so they're going back and working on that report. And I told them that we'll need to have it finished and finalized before the next Public Safety Working Group meeting on July 22. So that seemed to be going well, we had a good meeting with them on Friday afternoon, and the changes that probably need to be made in that. So that, one of the primary things we have to look at, that the cost for a new Troutdale Police Department has to establish an apartment that is competitive with, not the DOWs, not Newburgh, not Tillamook, but Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and Gresham Police Department, because those are our direct competition for those officers. And so we made some tweaks in it to be competitive with those departments, because in this day and age of law enforcement hiring, it's tough out there, and we've got to be competitive. So I want to make sure that our, their cost for that reflected that, so I updated the committee on that. Well, not on the meeting, because the meeting was last Friday on the follow-up, but that's just an additional that you got that they didn't get. So that's where we were at with the law enforcement issue. And then on the fire service issue, a number of things we discussed. Number one, that Gresham did pass their levy. So just so you'll know, the city of Gresham now has additional charges for their citizens of $15 per month as a utility monthly assessment. And the new bond levy, on average, would cost the citizens about $41 a month. So currently, the city of Gresham has a total of, through the math, $56 per month of additional charges to their citizens to support fire and police. So I don't know what the impact of that, passing that bond levy is for Gresham's consideration of the future. As I've said many times before, I don't know what passing the bond levy means they're going to kick their feet up and says, oh, we're good for five years, we don't need to worry about the future of the general fund and being able to afford these services. Or will they look at it going, what a blessing, we'd not have time to figure this out with the other three cities and work with them and come up with a regional solution to our fire safety issue? So we're still waiting for that answer, we haven't really got it yet for the city of Gresham, but we're all working on getting that answer. The other thing we talked about was that I met with Fire District 10 on April 23, their board. Chief Lewis was there from Gresham Fire, and the head of the Firefighters Union was there. And definitely, Fire District 10 Board and the Firefighters Union are in support of a Fire District. Fire District 10, of course, is in support of us joining them, but the whole idea of a Fire District, they think is much more sense, is much more stable for fire services in East County. And the Gresham Fire Union loves a Fire District, because that way they're only controlled by a board that only cares about fire. They don't have to fight with the city council and fight with other departments for their money. And so the Fires Union is a big fan of that. And what we heard from Praxis is a constituent group like the Firefighters Union is a great ally to have if you're supporting a Fire District vote, because they are directly benefited by it, and they're fairly active in that. So we talked about that and what Gresham was going to do, and talked to Fire District 10. Then, as you know, and I'll remind you in a minute when we do staff communication is, you got, should get it soon, the staff report agenda and the Zoom information. For next Monday night, we're having a three cities council meeting to talk about fire. So we talk, updating them all about these things that I just kind of talked about, so that all three councils are on the same page. So we're going to do that next Monday night. The other thing we, oh, the other thing that we're doing also is that we are finishing up the final contract, we're hiring an economic firm to be able to analyze if there was a Fire District in Troutdale, what would that mean to our citizens in terms of increased property taxes? Would compression impact the resources available to the city through our own property tax income? Would it income, how would it income other revenue in the general fund? And I know this is not an attractive idea, but I got an economic expert working on it, so I said I need to make sure the council has this tool. What would the city raise if it did something similar to probably most of the cities in the metro area, which is they do have an additional utility fee they attach to pay for police and fire? And I just picked the number out of a hat saying, how about $10? Because with $10, it's easy to know if you go up or down, what the math means. So that you would know, what would the city raise if we had a $10 per month utility fee? Which of course is only two-thirds of what Gresham currently charges. Because as we get into our contracts next year, our costs are going to go up, and you need to have tools and know ideas of what would revenue options be for. So that's going to be part of the study to know that they're going to get for us in a month or two, which is what would the property tax impacts be on our citizens if there was a separate Fire District? What would that impact our city budget by taking out fire as a line item in the general fund? But would compression impact us at all, and that $10 utility fee? So those are the things that I talk with them about, and that's generally the progress for you to know what we're doing right now and getting our information together, so that you all have everything you need as we get closer down this road to making decisions about what we're going to do. So, and it's always online, if you want to see the minutes, I mean, the minute. The minutes are recorded and available on our website if you want to watch that meeting, and I will send you the PowerPoint from Praxis on fire districts. So, any questions?
Are we all invited to the three city?
Yes, you are, you should get that tomorrow, I think.
I believe the invite went out today.
Did it go out today?
It's in your email. And it's at city of Wood Village.
Wood Village, halfway in between, I guess, it's close.
Just to comment on raise, a couple of points that stuck out with me as I'm on that committee. Timeline that Praxis was saying, significant timeline to do this, plan it out. They were saying, even if we get all our ducks in a row, probably we're looking at November of 2028. So it's, it's going to take a while, we're going to need some sort of stopgap in between. And then the other light that went on for me as well was if Multnomah County initiates this and it's an area vote going into a Fire District, Gresham being such a large piece of the pie could make the decision for all four cities, because they vote in and we would be pulled right along with them, because we just don't have the population to swing that vote. So just a couple of things to keep in mind that really stuck out with me during that meeting as Ray was talking. Couple thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Public comments open on agenda item number 11, an update Public Services, Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group. P swag, that doesn't make sense, let's call it piss dog.
Who came up with that?
Public comments open, anybody on Zoom wishes to make comment on the update? Now's the time, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody, anybody in council chambers tonight? Not seeing anybody, jump at the chance, I'm going to go ahead and close public, close public comments. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. It's a lot of work ahead, it's a long road in front of us.
It's a big decision.
Big, well, yes. So yeah, again, Monday night, three cities meeting, city of Wood Village, uh, six o'clock?
I think it was six. I look at...
I looked at it and it was just, six PM, correct. And there's Zoom availability, so if anybody wishes to attend on Zoom. Otherwise, I'd appreciate participation and in the discussion and figuring out. We're not going to come up with an answer on Monday night, but figuring, participating in the discussion moving forward. All right, thanks, sir. Agenda item number 12, staff communications.
Okay, great. Hey, most exciting, number one on my list, that even though we have not signed the CNM agreement with Union Pacific Railroad, that's at the lawyers in Omaha, but it shouldn't be a problem, we just have to wait, it may take a month or two. Today, the actual bid notice went out for the construction of the Sandy River Waterfront Trail. It's actually posted now, it's open, and we are collecting bids between now and July 11. So on July 12, we'll know what the numbers are and who's bid to build that trail, and hopefully before the end of summer, we'll start moving dirt out there for the park and trail the citizens have been waiting for for 20 years. So it's exciting that we're actually at the point now of getting bids to do that trail. Connected that also, I've mentioned it before, but it's all done. The trail, all the way north of that Long Harlow, the ODOT and Port-au-Prince finished their trail, paved it all the way up to the levee, and then all the way down from Sundial down to Chinook Landing is all a paved trail now on top of the levee. So that was great to get that portion of the trail done too. So as we finish our trail, you know, from downtown Troutdale, all the way past Chinook Landing is a paved bike and pedestrian trail that has no cross streets, if you don't count Sundial, but that's just a small one. But, so anyway, so that's cool, so that's great, that went out, it was posted today. Second of all, we talked about next Monday's meeting. This is a month for meetings, you're going to earn your break this summer, because we're also having our summer URA meeting next Tuesday night in this room, which we need to approve our budget for the URA. And then, following the URA meeting, we will have an executive session to talk about all our wonderful employees. Oh, Noel, you're the last one here. But no, we'll be talking about the union negotiations in an executive session next Tuesday night after that URA meeting. So add that on, make sure that's on your calendar. Number four, hopefully you got a chance to visit downtown Troutdale this weekend. This was our one weekend of the year where we closed shop downtown, but not really closed shop, we closed the streets, but the shops are all open. We had a great turnout this weekend, the weather was wonderful. You know, as you know, we are tracking the number of people who are downtown. We have the technology, a company that does that for us, we don't know who they are, we don't have any identifying information, we just know how many cell phones show up downtown, and they can track that, just the numbers of them. Friday night, we had the second highest number in the last four years for people downtown Troutdale. On Saturday, we had 14% more than last year of the same events, the Arts Festival. So numbers were up at the Arts Festival on Saturday, we don't have Sunday's numbers yet, but those were great numbers, so attendance has been up. And we got reports, we talked to three different restaurants downtown, said they had record sales for this weekend. So they were really positively impacted by the traffic downtown Troutdale this way, this last weekend. And so it was overall, for a second time closing, you know, the experiment we had last year to close downtown, and a lot of people took a minute to get adjusted, now they know it was coming, now they know what to expect. It was a very good weekend downtown Troutdale, which was good. And then, by the way, in case anybody's interested in the room or out in Zoom land, on June 5 was the opening for anybody filing for mayor or city council. And you have all the way till August 27 to file for mayor and city council. So that is, it opened at Multnomah County, if you have any questions, talk to Sarah about that. On, number six, June 22, we are having recycling drop-off at Public Works, and all that information is on our social media and our website, if you want to find out what you can drop off for recycling at Public Works. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Agenda item number 13, council communications, let's start with Counselor Caswell.
Yeah, nothing for me.
Thank you, Counsel Glance?
I just want to say how much I appreciate our spring cleaning, where we can sit some of those bulky items out and just, you know, some of the old Christmas wreaths that are still sitting around and old pillows and stuff, it's just...
still sitting around and old pillows and stuff, it's just, it's so nice to be able to do it.
Great, thank you, Councilor Woodruff?
Nope, I'm all good, sir.
Councilor White?
Yeah, it was, I thought it was really nice of those gentlemen spoke on public comment about Councilor Ripma and Danny Staff, and I had to applaud because, you know, these guys do doing an awful lot of work and they're kind of unsung heroes, so it was nice that it came from some of their peers that they were working with. And I just wanted to thank staff for, I know it's a lot of work to put on an event like that, and I I surveyed a couple of the businesses as well, and they said they had record days, the only comment I heard is they would have liked to have a booth in front of their restaurant, so four of them said that, but they didn't want to pay the fee, they felt like they should have had a right to do, be part of the festival. And I kind of agree with that because, you know, the whole idea is to build business in our town, and these are anchor tenants, and the vendors are there for that event, and that's it. And they also felt like it was difficult to compete against a vendor because they did not want to upcharge, they wanted to be consistent with their normal pricing. So just something to think about, and hopefully we'll get Shannon Chisholm in here for an update.
Yeah, Shannon is our contract consultant and event planner that works with us to put this on, she does a wonderful job.
Yep, she came in last time and kind of did a review, a recap, so we can keep making it better, it sounds like it was, so that's all I have.
I'll speak really quick. First off, it's beautiful out, I don't know if it's gonna last, but it's Father's Day weekend coming up, so happy Father's Day weekend to all the dads out there. Get out, enjoy the sunshine, go go down and spend time in our city, walk around, get some, get some exercise and move. Also, I want to make a comment, it's not derogatory, it's not meant to show support or no support, it's just a comment that it's difficult to come up and speak your peace in front of a governing body, it's difficult to come and speak your peace in front of your managers and and manager of the city, it's easier to sit back and complain. So I want to say that I appreciate the comments from our employees, it's difficult to do that, so I want you to know that I appreciate you coming in and speaking to council.
Councilor White?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of echo a couple things that were already said, I think that it's important to recognize when people volunteer and put a lot of time and effort into activities that they do, and so we had a couple of people that were recognized tonight, and take my chance to thank you guys also for your efforts in not only working together with us, but just helping our city function better and me as a citizen, we, I appreciate, appreciate those efforts by everybody, but I think that we had two people recognized, so that's important to help keep that, keep that going for everybody. And then I wanted to also just kind of echo Mayor Lauer said, I think it's it's important that people are able to like come up and and speak and be heard, and to see who know, like whether, you know, you're, everybody is heard tonight, and I, we appreciate everybody, and that's important to be able to do that, and it is not always easy, but you are heard, so. Yeah, that was, that was it, just those two things, I guess.
Thank you, Councilor Ripma?
Yeah, well, hey, I appreciate all my kind words. The I went to First Friday and on Saturday to the art festival, both seemed very successful. I only heard compliments about how the city managed managed the events. On on First Friday, restaurants had seating out at the street, it was it was the art festival thing that didn't allow without them paying extra, and that should be looked at, but at least on First Friday, they they had seating out on the street, and that's as it should be, I think, too. Anyway, and of course, city staff was totally responsible for the weather.
We worked really hard, Councilor Ripma, you're welcome.
It was excellent, excellent, I mean gorgeous weekend, so, and I think I'm last, so I'm gonna move to adjourn.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, everybody, we are done, thank you very much, have a good evening.